...of inspiration Samantha Roverson.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this community that we serve in, Lord. I pray that you'll be with each of the members tonight here in this room, Lord, leading, guiding us in the decisions that we make and help us to understand that they affect today, tomorrow, and the far future, Lord. Thank you Samantha for being here tonight, Lord. We continue to pray for her and we're very happy to see her. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible)
(inaudible)
To the legions, to reply, the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Samantha. Will clerk take roll call please?
Mayor Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Tammon.
Here.
Kit.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Yo.
Here.
Beck is absent. Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a quarrel. Trustee Eric Beck has had surgery and is unable to attend the board meeting tonight. He has requested to attend this board meeting by speakerphone. The board previously adopted a set of rules permitting electronic attendance. At this time, I will entertain a motion to allow Eric Beck attendance at tonight's board meeting by speakerphone.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been approved. Will clerk, will clerk, will you take roll call again now with Eric here?
No, you just can announce that Mr. Beck, or Trustee Beck will be joining here and then you need to ask him.
He needs to identify himself now.
Okay.
You're in a second.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Will you identify yourself and what district you're a trustee?
Eric Beck, trustee District 6.
Okay, will clerk please note now that trustee Beck has joined the meeting by speakerphone. Can we get a little more volume out of that?
The rules require he identify himself, identify, and I'll do it for him, the trustee of District 6, thank you, and that he is physically absent for medical reasons.
Can you hear us Eric?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Next is approval of minutes for April 6, 2015, board meeting and budget hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or changes? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I hear any nays? Minutes has been approved. Next we have treasurer's report, Steve Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I look back at my 10 years as village treasurer, I've been honored to serve this capacity with three different administrations: Mayor Linda Vaughn, Mayor Tom Strickland, and Mayor Jerry Bowlin. I would like to thank the village staff, both past and present, for their help and guidance over the decade that I've served as treasurer. I am proud of several accomplishments I have implemented, including positive pay, laddering of investments which helps with the day-to-day operations of the village. I look forward to working with my replacement and training them in the aspects of the treasurer's duties. I would like to thank everyone who voted and supported me in my election as village treasurer and now as incoming village trustee, District 2. I look forward to starting a new chapter in my village career as trustee and look forward to serving my constituents in that capacity. The weekly treasurer's report reflects what the village received in MFT funds of $21,657.06 and Build Machesney funds of $180,710.44. The total of all funds this evening is $9,913,802.50. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you Steve. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been accepted. Next we have communications, village clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several things this evening. First of all, Mayor Bowlin will be presenting a proclamation for workers Memorial Day to Ron Welty. I'm not sure Ron is here yet. And it will be read by trustee Yo.
Whereas every year more than 10,000 American workers are killed on the job, and whereas tens of thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas millions are injured, and whereas another 100,000 workers die from lung cancer, disease, and other diseases related to toxic chemical exposure, and whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by organizing Workers Memorial Day on April 28, a day chosen by the unions of the AFL-CIO as a day to remember these victims of workplace injuries and diseases, by renewing our efforts to seek stronger safety and health protections, better standards of enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and by redirecting ourselves to improving safety and health in every American workplace. Now therefore, Jerry D. Bowlin, Mayor of the Village of Machesney Park, proclaims April 28, 2015, as Workers Memorial Day in Machesney Park in recognition of the workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job.
Thank you, Tom. We'll make sure that this is delivered to Mr. Welty. And also this evening trustee Kit will be reading a proclamation that the mayor will be presenting to Greg Beck from A-Bate in recog- in proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Whereas, safety is the highest priority for all highways and streets in our village and the state. Whereas, the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, whereas motorcycles are common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to relieve the traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our village and our state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of A-Bate of Illinois, Inc., a brotherhood aimed against education, but aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in the high school, in high school drivers' education programs to the general public in our village and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 100,000 precipitants in Illinois over the last five years. Whereas, all motorcyclists should join A-Bate of Illinois in actively promoting safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness to the citizens of our village and state. Whereas, motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism, money, and national community charitable organizations, and whereas during the month of May, all roadways users should unite in the safety of sharing our roadways with, within the Village of Machesney Park through the great state of Illinois. Now therefore, I, Jerry Bowlin, the mayor of Machesney Park in the great state of Illinois, recognize 28 years of A-Bate of Illinois, Inc., over 364,685 registered motorcyclists statewide, and recognize of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, educational awareness, and hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 to be Motorcycle Awareness Month in the Village of Machesney Park, and urge all motorists to join in the effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I have had a motorcycle accident. I'd just like to say that in the past probably 10 years, we have brought our accidents down 30 percent in the state of Illinois, but we have gained 57 percent for motorcycles. So basically, in the state of Illinois, not the state of Illinois, but in the United States, one out of every 36 people have a motorcycle license. And about one every 20 in Illinois has a motorcycle license. We are ranked one of the highest motorcycle states. We're about the sixth highest motorcycle state in Illinois, or in the United States for registered motorcycle riders. So I appreciate the proclamation and I'll take it back to my chapter. Thank you.
Thank you.
This evening we also have some individuals that wish to address the board prior to the vote on the AAR project. And first we'll welcome Ralph Schultz and Jonathan Hui, students at Harlem High School who will be part of that exciting program. If you'd like to go to the podium?
I just say what's on your... When I first heard about it, I was pretty excited. It seemed something that I'd like to get into and I thought it was pretty good, like a local career to get into and grow in. And when I saw the program, I was pretty excited about it, but I couldn't start it.
Okay.
I thought that being able to start my life off through college was going to be pretty hard, but thanks to Rock Valley, I was able to sustain being enrolled into college and having it paid for. And that is a big plus for me and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also I have a request to address the board on the MRO. And that is an item that's on the agenda. Return phone calls is not on the agenda, so Nancy Edwards, if you'd like to address the board on the MRO, that would be great.
Good evening. I'm a little bit disappointed tonight. I understand what MRO is all about. I've done my research and my homework and I have come to the conclusion that it's not exactly a win-win situation. And the reason I say that is the thousands of dollars, which I know how much it is, in the next eight, nine, 10 years that we're going to be giving to the MRO, is not that much. Okay, it's what, how much is it Lori? How much is it?
Pardon me?
How much is it going to be for the next eight, nine, 10 years? Mr. Green?
This is your opportunity to address the board. It's really not a question, a question and answer.
Okay, but I'm asking because I'm not real sure. Is it 30,000, 30,000 we're going to give them somewhere in that ballpark?
Whatever statements you feel you need to make.
Okay, so in the back part of around 30 grand, okay? I do so many different projects and this is one I have to focus on right now. It's not exactly a win-win situation, guys. And let me explain what I mean by that, okay? If you'll just give me a couple of minutes because, you know, it's hard to explain my point of view if you don't want to listen to me. I have the right to speak. It's feasible, yeah. It's a good project, yeah, I agree with that. Will it work? Will it work? Will the mechanics be up and running as far as training? Okay, yeah, probably in the next four years. But it is a long shot. And it's not really, I have to say no to it. I don't think that a lot of people understand it. But as far as return phone calls, Lori, excuse me, but I've contacted the mayor today and he wouldn't take my call. And that's wrong.
I'm sorry, you're addressing an agenda item? And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you Lori. Next we have warrants, trustee Snodgrass.
Okay. I present warrants, I mean $183,627.37. These were reviewed and recommended for approval earlier this evening at the Administration and Finance Committee and I move for their passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? I see none. Clerk take roll call please.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you Lori. The warrants are approved. Next we have administrative reports. I have received from treasurer Steve Johnson, April 14, 2015, Mayor Bowlin, and Board of Trustees, due to the fact that I won the election on April 7, 2015, for the position of village trustee, District 2, Illinois State Statute 65ILCS 5/3.1-15-15 dictates that I cannot hold two elected offices for the Village of Machesney Park at the same time. Therefore, please accept my letter of resignation from the position of Machesney Park Village Treasurer effective May 4, 2015. Thank you. This is Steve Johnson. I accept this resignation. I also thank you for all the years you've put in as treasurer, Steve. We appreciate you very much. Thank you. Now that I have accepted his resignation, I have the appointee to replace Steve for remainder of his term. My appointee's name is Tom Yo. That will be going to the board on May 4 for approval. Our prayers go out to the residents in Illinois tornado-affected areas, Fairdale, Rochelle, and Belvedere. We hope that they can recover their lives in a short period of time and we certainly all need to do our part in helping them to do that. I had the privilege of attending the Fireman's Appreciation Night that was hosted by the VFW Auxiliary, Ladies Auxiliary, Saturday night. There were three firemen that received Firefighters of the Year. They were Lieutenant Tyler Heatham, Richard Watchup, and Rob Loukowski. Congratulations to those three firemen for winning Fireman of the Year. And also thank the VFW Ladies Auxiliary. They did an outstanding job as usual. I also received a note from Northern Illinois Food Bank concerning Mayor's Day. I was privileged to be able to work that day. And it says, "Thank you for participating in 2015 Mayor's Day of recognition for national service with Northern Illinois Food Bank." Here's the good news. With your help, we were able to process 1,612 pounds of canned tomatoes and green beans. That food will help provide 1,343 meals to our hungry neighbors." That's the good news. So it was a pleasure working with them. Next we have attorney Tom Green.
Thank you, Your Honor. No report tonight, but I do want to acknowledge Kate Tammon and Tom Yo and Steve Johnson for their years of service and it's been my privilege to work. Thank you.
Thank you attorney Green. Next we have community development coordinator Lucia Madlon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to update the board and trustees and let you know that I did receive a letter from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity today, letting us know that they are expediting or accelerating the process to evaluate the enterprise zone applications and that we should know something by the end of the summer. The enterprise zone would still go into effect in January 2016, but I wanted to let you know that they are moving forward or accelerating the process. Thank you.
Thank you Lucia. Next we have Harlem High School student Laasan Justin Porter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This week there are varsity baseball and softball games at 5:00 PM on the 20th at Belvedere, 22nd at home, and 24th at Freeport. There is a varsity boys track meet at 4:30 PM on the 21st at Freeport, and varsity girls track meet at 4:30 PM on the 22nd at home, and 10:00 AM on the 25th. And there is a varsity girls soccer game at Belvedere at 7:00 PM on the 23rd. Next week, there are varsity baseball and softball games at 5:00 PM on the 27th at Gilbert, 29th and 1st at home. There is a varsity boys track meet at 4:30 on the 20th at Belvedere, and varsity girls track meet at 4:30 PM on the 29th at Belvedere-North, and 1st at Woodstock. Also, there is a varsity girls soccer game at 9:00 PM on the 30th at home, and a varsity boys tennis match at 8:30 AM on the 2nd, also at home. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you Justin. Next we have village engineer Chris Dawkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. An update of ongoing projects in the village. On 173, the center lane closures are now back in place. The contractor's been removing material from the center medians and preparing to install the new curb. Along those medians, they've been drilling and rebar. And the first curb pour is scheduled for later this week, weather permitting. We're flirting around with the nighttime lows and the low 30s that tends to dictate that we have to protect the concrete once it's in place. There's some question as to whether or not that'll occur or if they'll just wait for warmer weather. So we could potentially be delayed on our first concrete pour just because of weather. The contractors are also starting to work on the Corner Island removals, again to get those prepared for curb and gutter. Temporary pavement's been removed from Forest Hills Road and the contractor is in the process of prepping the stone. Again, first concrete pour on Forest Hills Road for new lanes is scheduled later this week, again weather permitting. The entrance to Menards, Panda and Walgreens off of Forest Hills Road has been closed. That's going to remain closed for about 30 days while they finish up the pavement on the north side of Forest Hills Road. The contractor's also going to start moving the temporary pavement from the center of Forest Hills Road this week in order to make way for new concrete in time for the Meyer opening. Colonial Ramona, the majority of the sidewalk is now in on dirt. We're pouring ramps and a few punch list items this week. Again, the weather depending, our concrete's scheduled for tomorrow. Restoration is 90% complete on Ramona, about 40% complete or so on Colonial. Weather permitting, I think the majority work's going to be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. We'll have certainly a few punch list items, mostly restoration related after that, but I think for the most part will be done. On Talmage, concrete punch list items were scheduled to start today. Fortunately, we got a little bit ringed out, so that's going to begin this week. And once those couple punch list items are complete, they'll get the restoration in and we'll have that project buttoned up. On Stones Landing, tree removals complete. We do have some crating to do down there yet. The contractor's set to begin preliminary work, installation of erosion control, et cetera, this week. And they indicated they want to begin masquerading this week as well. On the Leland Water, police report that all the valley hydrants have been installed. We're now ready to install the trunk storm sewer going down Leland, which brings me to my next project, which is the Leland Trunk Storage, Trunk Storm sewer and Pershing improvements. We had our pre-construction meeting with the contractors late last week. Our resident meeting is tomorrow night, 5 o'clock PM right here in this room. Contractor will begin preliminary work, basically delivering materials, installation of erosion controls, starting with the temporary mailbox banks, et cetera, this week. Storm sewer installation is set to begin just north of Wilson Drive, beginning early next week. I think we're penciled in for the 27th, if my memory is good here. And then finally, the copper and emerald improvements. We're advertising for bids this week. I think we're set to be in the Wednesday paper. We'll have a bid opening May 13 and more, May 18. And this evening earlier, we had three contracts on the agenda, so my next report will be longer.
Thank you Chris. Next we have public safety supervisor Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the police report from April 3 through the 16th, there were 774 calls for service in the village, 211 police reports taken, and 287 arrests. That's all I have.
Thank you Sergeant Bushman. Next we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports tonight? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited to announce that it appears that on April 23, which is Thursday, right, the Myers gas station will open. So we're on our way and a little less than a month, I believe Myers will open. So District 1 is excited and the Myers gas station will open on the 23rd, which also happens to be my 32nd wedding anniversary.
Thank you trustee Snodgrass. Are there any more reports? Trustee Wilson.
The Public Improvements and Safety Committee met this evening and will be moving three resolutions forward to tonight's meeting and one for the upcoming meeting.
Thank you trustee Wilson. Are there any more reports? I see none. Next we have consent agenda. The item for consideration on the consent agenda, are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda consists of item A, ordinance 11-15, an ordinance amending the zoning code to further regulate abandoned and unused commercial signs. It's the first reading. Item B, ordinance 14-15, ordinance rezoning numerous parcels identified in the ordinance from R3 to R1 in the Hawksview subdivision, first reading. Item C, ordinance 15-15, an ordinance rezoning several parcels in the Timberline Powell subdivision from R2 to R1, pardon me, first reading. Item D is ordinance 21-15, a variance to the front yard setback from 30 feet to 2 feet at 10912 Ventura Boulevard, first reading. Item E, ordinance 22-15, an amendment to Chapter 14 of the code to further regulate inoperable and unlicensed trailers, first reading. Item F, Resolution 18R15, approving a final plat identified as Windridge 9 located on Perryville Road. Item G, Resolution 19R15, approving a final plat combining two lots in Marlin Park subdivision. Item H, Resolution 25R15, a resolution appropriating 705 or 700,000? $705,000 MFT funds for fiscal year 15-16 to maintain streets and highways. Item I is Resolution 27R15, resolution approving a final plat combining five lots in the Colonial Gardens subdivision, plat 2. Item J, Resolution 28R15, authorizing the village administrator to execute documents for the replacement of the multi-function copier printer. Item K, Resolution 33R15, award competitive bid construction contract to N-Track Group, low bidder for the Gilbert and Wilshire improvements. Item L, Resolution 34R15, award competitive bid reconstruction contract to N-Track Group at low bidder for the Marquette Road and Liberty Boulevard improvements. And finally, item M, Resolution 35R15, award competitive bid contract to William Charles Construction for the Melbourne at Illinois 251 intersection improvements. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you Tim. Are there any further discussions from the trustees? I see none. Clerk take roll call.
Trustee Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
All items under consent agenda has been approved. Next we have unfinished business. Ordinance 23-15, adopt annual budget for year 2015, 2016, second reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report please?
Thank you, Your Honor. On the mic here, after...
On the mic here, after several budget workshops, the PNF Committee recommended approval of the annual budget. It is a balanced budget. The general fund expenditures total $6,263,300. Incidental funds combined, total expenditures of $10,604,576. And finally, the road fund 40 includes expenditures of $5,815,000 in new construction projects. Happy to entertain any questions, and this is the second final reading of this.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any trustee discussions? I see none. Clerk, take roll call, please.
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Ordinance 23-15 has been approved for second reading. Next, we have Resolution 30-R-15, IGA pledging funds to Winnebago County for AAR Corporation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So may it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution, in support of Winnebago County in their economic development efforts to attract the AAR Corporation to the Rockford Airport area, commits the village to pledging $20,000 per year for 20 consecutive years, and it contains a couple of conditions, namely that it's conditioned upon the county making a payment of at least $100,000 towards the debt associated with the project in each counter-year that the village is expected to make this payment, that the project is constructed prior to the first payment being made, and finally, that AAR remain a tenant of this facility, referenced in the recitals, and continues to actively operate the MRO facility in each of the years that the village is expected to make this payment. In the event that AAR were to vacate the premises, then a replacement business, which provides comparable services and number of jobs, occupies the facility within 18 months of AAR discontinuing its operations. That is the commitment in summary form. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any trustee discussions? Trustee Kidd.
I'll be changing my vote tonight to a yes. I talked to Chairman Scott Christensen. He doesn't have draft paperwork yet, but he's assured me that dislocated workers from Machesney Park have a slot to make sure that they can get rejob, retrained for the industry. He also sent a nay. He's also working on the irons of the students. So I'll be changing my vote to yes, because Scott Christensen gave me some of the insurances. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kidd. Is there any more discussions? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll also be voting yes tonight. I have received lots of constituents' phone calls. Many of them have expressed a request for me to vote yes. After I've explained to them what a yes vote means, many of them also changed their mind and thought I should vote no. With my yes vote, I want to say shame on Winnebago County for not asking us before. They committed the $8 million, and I am voting yes because this is a good thing for our region. And so I know I said at the meeting last two weeks ago that I would be voting no, but from hearing, from all my constituents, I am going to be voting yes tonight.
Thank you, trustee Snodgrass. Is there any more discussions? I see none. Would a clerk take a roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Resolution 30-R-15 has been adopted. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. We have some awards to hand out at this time, and I'll turn the mic over to Lori.
Thank you, Your Honor. The village is always proud of our representation and the fine job that our trustees and elected officials do. I guess one small comment is, for the residents, you really don't see how the hours that they put in. You see them here for a half an hour every two weeks, but the 80 hours behind the scenes don't always get appreciated. This evening, the mayor's going to recognize the service by our outgoing elected officials. And first of all, Steve Johnson, if you'll go to the podium, please. Steve's been our treasurer for the last 10 years, until being elected as trustee in District 2. And Mayor Boland has a presentation for Steve.
Steve, on behalf of the mayor, the staff, and the entire village, we'd like to present you this plaque in recognition of your 10 years of service as treasurer. We appreciate you, and we thank you for it, and that's all the word that can come on. Thank you so much. That is a honor. Very, very nice of you guys. I really appreciate that so much.
And next, Kate Tammon has done a fine job for the last four years representing the constituents in District 2, and we all are very proud to have worked with her. Mayor has a presentation for Kate.
Kate, again, from the mayor, the staff, and all of the village, we thank you for your four years of service as trustee. You did a great job. We appreciate you, and...